Good evening. This is the Town of South Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on Tuesday, February 11th, 2025. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First of all, I'd just remind everybody, please silence your cell phone. And tonight, we have Commissioner Korashi is going to seat for Commissioner Foley, and Commissioner Kapchunos is going to sit for Commissioner Bernstein. And now we'll...
I think actually Commissioner Buganski is going to seat for Commissioner Bernstein because Commissioner Kapchunos is not here. Sorry, did you say Kapchunos or Buganski?
I meant to say Buganski. Oh, what did I do? All right, so let me start over. Commissioner Korashi is going to sit for Commissioner Foley. Commissioner Buganski is going to sit for Commissioner Bernstein. Okay. All right, so we're going to start with public hearings. If the Secretary would read the notice?
Notice is hereby given that there will be a public hearing on Tuesday, February 11th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the South Windsor Town Hall to consider the following. Number one, application 25-07P Fleet Assist LLC. This is a request for a special exception to Table 4.1.1A to allow for a car dealership license to sell new and used automobiles, limited to four, on property located at 1257 John Fitch Boulevard, Unit 7 Industrial Zone. Number two, application 24-46P C-Tech Solar LLC, request for special exception to 3.1.1A and site plan of development for a large solar energy system, 5.66 acres in size, on property located at 379 Scantic Road, RR Zone. This was continued from January 28th, 2025. And finally, number three, PCC-sponsored zoning text amendment to Section 6.5 for signs to modify multiple sections of the sign regulations and add Appendix K Sign Lighting, continued also from January 28th, 2025 meeting. Copies of the application are on file in the office of the Town Clerk and/or the Planning Department and online at south windsor-ct.gov. At this hearing, interested persons may be heard and written comments by the public will be received by mail or email. Persons who may require an accommodation can contact staff at 860-644-2511, extension 2329. Stephen Wagner, Chair, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you. So the way we conduct the public hearings is, first of all, we ask the applicant to come and present their application, whatever they want to present. When that's done, we ask for comments from the staff, which be either our Director of Planning, Michelle Ipe, or our Assistant Planner, Justin Russo. Then we ask for comments from the public, for, against, questions, comments, whatever you have to say. When you do speak, we ask that you sign in and introduce yourself verbally. And then finally, we go to the commissioners, and they may have questions either for the applicant or for members of the public who may have said something interesting. So at that point, when there are no more comments, we would close the public hearing. And then at a separate time, which hopefully would be later in the evening, we actually take up the application and vote on whether to approve it and whether there are any other conditions we need to add, and so on and so forth. So for now, we'll start with application 2507P Fleet Assist. Try to stay as close as you can to the mic.
Hi, my name is Christopher Davis, the owner and only employee of Fleet Assist. I stood in the same room almost going on two years ago to apply for my repair license. Since then, that said repair license is expiring the 28th of this month. Also, since then, the garage has moved from 1257 John Fitch. No, it's moved from 1256 to 1257. That being said, I reached out to DMV and they told me since the physical address has changed, I have to go through the complete process and do everything over again. And I figure, why not go for the upgraded version of the license and get the dealer license? Fleet Assist has been in business for two years. I primarily service FedEx Ground contractors right up the street. So far, it's been working out pretty good, and I'm hoping you guys grant me the opportunity to continue doing what I've been doing. And that is it.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, then from our planning staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is a request for a special exception to Table 4.1.1A to allow a car dealership license to sell new and used automobiles, limited to four, on property located at 1257 John Fitch Boulevard, Unit 7 Industrial Zone. The applicant has provided a narrative as well as a copy of the existing site plan. This application is subject to the review of the criteria in Section 8.4B, which include that the proposal is consistent with the goals and objectives of the plan of conservation and development. The application has met the requirements of the zoning regulations. The land is physically suited to the proposed use. Minimal, if any, adverse environmental impacts are created. No traffic or other hazards will be created. The impacts on the capacity of the present and proposed utilities, street drainage systems, sidewalks, and other elements of the infrastructure will be minimal. There will be minimal or no adverse effects on the existing uses in the area. Surrounding property values will be conserved. The character of the neighborhood will be maintained or minimally disrupted. The general welfare of the community will be served. There is a balance between neighborhood acceptance and community needs. Historic factors are adequately protected, or due consideration to preservation of historic factors has been demonstrated. The overall physical appearance of the proposed development is compatible with surrounding development and the commission's goals for the neighborhood corridor. The architectural design is aesthetically pleasing and blends well into the surrounding area. Noise created by onsite activities, including vehicle equipment noise. And finally, the commission may impose additional conditions in accordance with these regulations in order to ensure that all applicable criteria enumerated above and/or within a particular use category are satisfied. So like the applicant stated, he currently is holding a general repair license, which is soon to expire, looking to transfer to a used car dealer license through the DMV. If you'll remember, we just did something very similar to this two, three weeks ago with Eagle Auto. So the regulation only allows for a maximum of four cars offered for sale on the entire site. If any other businesses here were to apply for a used car dealer license, they would all have to comply with this restriction, which would be enforced by the property owner. So the license allows businesses to purchase and sell used vehicles at the auctions. So one thing I would like to know, how cars that are purchased or sold, how they'll be transported to and from the auctions? And finally, all vehicles associated with this business shall be parked in the approved location on site. The applicant on his site plan has indicated where he would be parking the vehicles. He's Unit 7, which is the northwest corner of the building on the end there. There are no engineering comments, and if this application is approved, planning staff has no additional comments.
So Chris, you might as well sit down. We'll probably have some questions, so don't...
All right, no problem.
Sit near the front. Okay, are there any members of the public who would like to comment on this application? Commissioners, we'll start with Commissioner Buganski.
I don't have any questions right now or comments.
No questions?
No questions, but to say it's a smart move with this change of address to go for the upgrade, so that's great. I'm all for it.
Mr. Korashi?
No comments or questions?
No questions or comments?
Just one. You had mentioned the question of how are the cars going to be transported to and from the auction? Chris, I was just...
I'll be using a trailer, like a local tow truck company?
Does that work for you guys? Okay.
Yeah, that should be fine.
Okay, nothing else?
All right, so that answered my one question, which was basically his, so I think we're done. Any reason to keep the public hearing open? Motion?
I move to close the public hearing for this application.
Second.
All in favor? All right, any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Now we move on to application 24-46P C-Tech Solar. This has been continued from February, from January 28th, and there were a number of open questions, so we'll hear from the applicant, see how we're doing on getting those questions answered.
Thank you. Hi, good evening, councilmen. Too much. I'm a senior civil engineer that works for Bernstein McDonald, who's my employer. So my reason for being here is, I understand this meeting is continuance from the last meeting, and that was continued because the council needed time to review comments from the public. So I'm here to see if I can answer any questions if needed.
So you actually gave us a written memo? I'm trying to find it.
Yeah, so part of my conversations with, or email to the planning department was providing some of the answers that were asked last time. One of the answers was solar panel data sheets. Up on the screen, you can see the panel model that we're going to be using for this project. This is a silicon-based cell. So I understand there were some questions about possible contamination. This cell is enclosed in glass, and there's little minimal chance of that ever happening. The other question that was asked was, what kind of oil the transformer would have? The transformer will use FR3 oil, which is non-hazardous, it's non-toxic, and biodegradable, dielectric fluid that's derived from vegetable oil. Currently, we don't have a data sheet because the products have not been procured at this time. But this is a safe oil that's widely used in electric transformers. And normally, when this type of transformer is used, then there's no reason to have a containment system because it's non-toxic. As part of this, of our response to some of the noise questions, there was an addendum also provided, which should be another attachment that was provided here.
Yeah, it should be in that second tab on the screen there.
This report was prepared with WSP, and it went further into describing the tonality and the specific criteria for determining that in the one-third octave band. Generally, when they did their assessment, they, through the sound modeling, their results were that this project is well below the discrete tones that will be experienced at the property based on the Connecticut requirements, which you can see in Table 3 of the report. Okay? And the next question is, there was a question about, I guess, fire safety. So normally, the fire department would control or isolate and contain the fire. The solar installation will not provide direct power to the town, so there's no chance of the neighborhood being affected by a power outage because of it. Additionally, the solar farm that's being proposed does not include battery storage, and therefore, it's not going to have any lithium ion on site. And again, as previously mentioned, the solar panels are made specifically of silicon cells, which are generally safe. I think that was the end of the memo.
All right, thank you. Okay, I tell you what, this is a rather lengthy and detailed memo. I'd like to give the commissioners five minutes to study this. It's the first time I've seen it, so we're just... We're still in session, but we'll just spend some time reading this memo, okay? Everybody found, got a copy of it? Everybody had enough time? Okay, in which case, we'll move on to our staff.
Thank you. I just wanted to put on the record, as a follow-up to our public hearing, I did contact the planner in East Windsor, and she put me in touch with the building official, Ken Rich from East Windsor, regarding the best site to visit. And Ken directed me to the Middle Road site, which I did send you a map with that site, which I think some of you visited. He did readily admit that it's a problem site with noise and that it's something he's been dealing with right along. He did encourage me to have you visit another site because there's the site in Enfield, which again, and I'll submit this for the record, was given to the commission as a potential site to visit because he felt that site, he had visited the week before and didn't have any noise emanating from it, and he thought it was a good example, and the same panels would be using in another location in East Windsor. So I did send you an email with the two sites to visit, and I just did want to put that on the record for... And I did send this to the applicant as well, so he was aware of the sites that we'd be visiting. Beyond that, you do have, you know, the responses to the questions that were raised. I think you do have a couple new letters that were submitted for the record. The one thing that I did speak to the applicant about is we're still calculating that impervious coverage to correct it, but that is something we can handle. It's an approval condition. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, or to have a seat, I think we'll... Not too far back, though. Any members of the public like to speak about this or have comments?
Good evening. I want to thank you for all your hard work on being in this committee. But I guess tonight I have some questions. This is regarding 379 Scantic Road with C-Tech and the solar.
What's your name, sir?
My name is Mark D. Sianzia, 39 Debbie Drive, South Windsor. So some of my concerns are, I don't know if you're aware, with the State of Connecticut Consumer Protection. In January, in January 2024, there was a meeting between the State of Connecticut building officials, which are about 150, and there happened to be about 30 people from Consumer Protection. I don't know if you're aware, but for the year of 2023, there is over 3,800 complaints on solar, whether it was salesmanship, insulation, or the insulation of the fields or the farms, as we would call them, with the panels. They stated that they expected probably anywhere another 2,500, on top of 3,800, for the year of 2024. So in saying that, there's a lot of unknown with Consumer Protection with solar. Also, I don't know if you're aware, the state Capitol, state legislator session, this session here, I was going through the bills. I stopped reading the bills after I read 14 of them. But I did look at the number of bills for solar. It was as high as 31 bills being proposed or being worked on by the state Capitol, the state legislators. I don't know if you're aware of that. That was like 49 pages to reading, and I didn't go into all the bills themselves. As we speak here, I have a little, couple other concerns. At the last council meeting, the last statement before they went into executive committee is that the Town of South Windsor might be interested in purchasing that land. is that the town of South Windsor might be interested in purchasing that land. It sounds pretty great, but my only concern is, are we going to purchase that land with the solar panels on there? I have to worry about that twenty years with the hazards, waste and everything else. And I, I think maybe one of the reasons why we want to purchase that land, that might be a gateway to the Scannick River Park that might be proposed in twenty years or twenty-five. My other question, is there any money available from the D E P? Because that money was stated in two thousand and nineteen, I believe, and I haven't seen it yet. I've been following the bill through the D E P. Now, my other concern is, I don't know if we addressed it tonight, or he addressed it tonight, is the fire service. You know, this is a growing concern in the fire service all over the country today. One of my questions to you are, are they going to have a team respond if there's a, if there's an active fire there? How are they going to turn it off? How are they going to damp the, the waste from the batteries or the facility itself? These are just many questions I think that we haven't really answered. But I think there's a lot of transparency that has to be involved here. I think the town council, when they went into executive session, should be telling the public if they're going to buy that or not buy it. You know, I don't have a problem buying it. I have a problem putting up the solar and then twenty years from now, I'm not going to be here. But with an option of forty-five years, right? That would give a total of sixty-five years. The unknown of what's going to be in that soil, we don't know anything about. So is it going to be passive recreation in twenty years or forty-five years? Or is it going to be like rancher of field in East Hartford, which is basically dump? So we're going to buy a piece of property that possibly could be a piece of, piece of dump or trash? I don't know. These are just some of the questions I have to ask you guys tonight. But I, but I feel deep down inside, I took a ride this Saturday. I started on Ellington Road. I went northbound on Route Five. Then when I got to Scannick Road on Route Five, I did a U-turn and I went southbound, southbound from Scannick Road all the way up to two ninety-one. And when I was looking out the windows, I, I counted seven potential solar farms that could be built there. So that's my, that's one of my concerns. But I'm thinking, this could be the gateway, we're going to be the gateway to East Windsor? Because sooner or later, Southern Auction's going to sell their property. Oh, what a great piece of property that starts in Scannick Road and goes all the way down to ninety-one. And guess what? It's already flat, it's already paved, and it's pretty easy to put solar panels there. So this is just the beginning of what we're going to be taking place here in this community. So I just want to make sure you're aware of that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public?
Hello. My name is Jennifer Krujer. You might have heard of me before. Long letter from last session. I own the property, a budding property of three sixty-five Scannick Road in East Windsor with my husband. I want to thank you for taking the time to read my letter on the record last meeting and also for continuing the hearing so further, to further consider all the information, concerns and issues relating to this application. Today, I would like to make a brief statement to provide the commission with further information with respect to questions that, and issues that were unanswered or not adequately addressed at the January twenty-eighth meeting, specifically about property values, fire risk and site restoration. Regarding the potential negative impact on property values and the special exception criteria that surrounding property values will be conserved. With my January twenty-two letter, I submitted a copy of an independent scholarly literature review of six available studies on the potential effect of utility scale solar development on adjacent property values. This concluded that the empirical literature suggested that utility scale solar development has the potential to reduce housing values for homes within approximately one half mile of these installations. One of the reports included in the review actually found that this negative impact is particularly significant in rural areas, where the installation of solar arrays are on farm and forest lands, impacts the open space and rural character that contributes to the desirability of these locations. To clarify, at the January twenty-eighth meeting, Mr. Tao incorrectly referred to my submissions of the six studies, the literature review. He said that it wasn't applicable because it was based on a property where clear cutting was involved. This is not accurate. I believe he was confusing my literature review submission with Ms. Dow's submission, where she cited an example where the town of Enfield reduced the real estate tax assessment by twenty-one percent for residential property located next to a utility scale solar project. So I just wanted to clarify that. On the fire risk, utility scale solar projects like the one being proposed are considered industrial use because they are large scale facilities that generate electricity for the grid. Fire risks are inherent in utility scale solar systems and cannot be totally engineered out. Fire Trace International, a manufacturer of industry-leading fire suppression systems designed to safeguard high-risk equipment like solar panels, issued a report on the hidden danger of fire on utility scale solar, as well as provided a guide to solar farm fire protection. The report stated that the solar industry is potentially underestimating the risk of fire at solar farms. A shortage of data on solar farm fire and research into the issue has given rise to suspicions that fires at solar farms have been underreported. However, some available data does exist. One data set released by the U.S. Fire Administration found that instances of solar system fires more than doubled during the period twenty fifteen to twenty eighteen. Further, a study by the UK's B R E National Solar Center found that more than a quarter of fires involving solar systems were caused by the photovoltaics and those fires were all serious fires, meaning fires that were difficult to extinguish and spread beyond the area of origin. The report further stated the number of fires start in inverters, which form the most complex part of a photovoltaic or P V system. According to P V system distributor Solarity, inverters are combustible due to their polymer content. Solarity has also highlighted how during and after a solar fire, the P V system can potentially produce liquid, solid or smoke emissions and firefighters responding to the incident could be exposed with dangerous levels of metals such as lead or cadmium, cadmium and selenium. The guide states that poor quality equipment, faulty insulation practices, improperly sealed mechanisms compromise electrical wiring and irregular maintenance can create conditions that lead to a fire. In addition, utility scale solar sites come with their own unique environmental fire risks like hot and sunny environments, foundation failures, buildup of debris, frost heath, flooding and humidity, and damage to inverters from animals and other natural elements. The guide states that solar array fires are extremely destructive. When one ignites, fires will rapidly spread with the possibility of causing enormous financial and environmental damage, including costly destruction of property and equipment, wildfires and potential loss of life. The guide further raised concerns for first responders, the main one being the risk of electrical shock. During a fire event, the solar panels and associated wiring will still be active with live electrical current even when the panel has been turned off. This makes suppressing a fire extremely difficult and dangerous. Both the report and guide acknowledge that it is difficult to completely eradicate the risk of fire at utility scale solar sites, but there are steps that can be taken to minimize the risk, such as having solar systems regularly tested by independent third parties and incorporating additional safety components such as fire suppression systems. Also, it is recommended to conduct a fire risk assessment, which is the first step towards comprehensive fire protection and should be a top priority for all solar array operations. None of these preventative measures appear to be included in this application. The decommissioning plan is particularly inadequate with regard to the restoration of the prime farmland and any guarantee the then-current operator will properly and completely decommission the process, the project. C Tech's decommissioning plan states that they will re-vegetate the site to match pre-construction conditions to the degree feasible. Further, they disclose that the lease with the property owner states, upon termination of the agreement, grantee shall remove the above-ground and below-ground to a depth of three feet below grade solar facility from the property. This three-foot limitation means C Tech or whoever the current operator will be at the time has the right to actually leave part of the racking posts or anything else deeper than three feet in the ground. The Connecticut Department of Agriculture recommends citing solar on non-farmland, agricultural infrastructure and unclassified farmland soils not currently in production or fallow fields that have been previously disturbed prior to citing solar on classified farmland containing prime farmland. If the previous options have been exhausted and due diligence has been done to justify such, DOAG and the Connecticut Department of Environmental Protection recommend the dual use of farmland referred to as agro-voltaics. This guidance seems to say that citing on prime farmland is a last resort. However, if it is done, the guidance raises several points about decommissioning and site restoration. Connecticut General Statute, Section sixteen dash fifty K subsection A is an act concerning certain solar voltaic facilities located on prime farmland. This requires a bond to cover all costs associated with the decommissioning of solar projects to megawatts A C or greater cited on prime farmland and the restoration of such prime farmland. During decommissioning pursuant to this act, solar developers will be required to return the land to productive agricultural use by completing several items, including but not limited to removal of racking posts completely from the ground by pulling them out. They cannot be cut at ground level. Decompaction of compacted soils, soil testing and incorporation of needed amendments to restore the soil to be suitable for farming. While this act may not be applicable to this application before us, it could be applied or at least used as a guide if the commission has concerns about proper decommissioning and site restoration, as I do. However, as the application now stands, there is no actual requirement to restore the site to prime farmland or any actual conditions to guarantee it will be properly and completely decommissioned by whoever the current operator is when it is taken out of service. Lastly, I do have two questions after the meeting. I would like to request further clarification about the non-conforming density question. It is my understanding that solar panels are generally considered impervious. As a result, please provide a clearer basis for any determination that the proposed project's thirty-six percent density is no longer considered non-conforming. And second, it wasn't entirely clear, but please clarify that C Tech and the property owner have not agreed to move the solar array back to a hundred feet from the town line as requested by the East Windsor Town Planner. Instead, the property owner has agreed to relinquish all development rights to the East Windsor portion of this property between the town line and actually my property line. If this is accurate, how would this condition be implemented and enforced? To conclude, several of us were impressed that the commission wanted to visit an East Windsor utility scale solar project in operation to experience the noise nuisance firsthand, as that experience presents the best evidence against citing utility scale solar in residential neighborhoods. While it's true that that project was approved by the citing council, it's been more than two and a half years of working with the residents and successive operators to attempt to mitigate the issue and what you may have experienced was the result. The indisputable noise nuisance issue, along with the independent evidence of potential negative impact on surrounding property values, very real fire risk and inadequate decommissioned site restoration safeguards, all serve to further illustrate that a utility scale solar array is incompatible with and does not belong in this rural residential zone. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Bill Smith. I live in East Windsor. My wife and I own three sixty-five Scannick Road and I own three seventy Scannick Road. I am in a butter. My concerns with this are basically this, I don't see how this can meet the special exemption criteria. There's been a lot of questions asked, but there really haven't been answers to, to many of them. There's, there's words, but there's no expertise. Property values, they say that they don't anticipate property values being affected. Well, they haven't brought in any experts. It's just a random state of opinion that anyone would accept that. I mean, people own houses. If you're going to be purchasing a house, do you want to buy one next to a field or in a nice neighborhood, or do you want to buy one next to an industrial solar plant? I can't understand how people wouldn't understand that it would affect property values. The screening, they talked about the, the character of the neighborhood. The screening is set up at, so it's six and a half, the fence is six feet, set at six inches, so we've got six and a half feet with solar panels that extend to twelve. The site itself runs from sixty-four feet in elevation up to eighty-two feet in elevation. Those solar panels are going to be running up the hill. The site, the fence will be roughly at sixty-six, sixty-six feet in elevation, so you're, from the road, you're just going to see nothing but solar panels going up the hill. It doesn't fit the character of the neighborhood. It's, it's, it's just a bad plan. I mean, to allow this in the town of South Windsor for people just to start putting solar panels and industrial uses next to homes is Pandora's box. I think it's something you should very, consider very carefully going forward because if this is approved, I can see a lot of other farmers that will just suddenly, well, you know, we're not making money on this anymore. We don't care about that neighborhood. Let's just do solar. I, I just feel that the, the application petitioners have come before you and they haven't really brought a lot of information. They, they say things, but there's not really any research or any backing behind it. Thank you for your time. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application?
You should have five additional letters for the record in your.
So yes, well now, have the commissioners read the letters. You can start with one of them.
Okay, they're all pretty short, so I'll just probably zip through them. The first one is from Clinton Williams, who lives at two Cobblestone Drive in Broadbrook. East Windsor has been lied to too many times. First selectman Jason Bowser had promised, quote, "No solar farms here." Now there is one thousand acres of solar farms. The town is a national embarrassment to the entire country. We are looked at as an example of what not to do. These solar farms have zero benefits to us here. They are a noise pollution. They devalue surrounding property. The chemicals from these panels seep into the ground. These panels are a lightning magnet. In the summer, the heat generated from the panels is very hot for those that are concerned about global warming and the wildlife has lost their space to stay. They have moved their territory closer to residential. I've seen more coyotes around my property since these farms went up. The damage has been done and I, for one, as a taxpayer here in East Windsor, have had enough. It's clear and obvious that somebody is receiving financial kickbacks on all of this. It has to stop and this is a great place to start. Then we hear from Dan O'Rourke, who lives at No Address. Regarding the Draghi Farm solar project, it appears as if the panels will be oriented so that the backside of the solar farm is what will be visible from the adjacent residential areas in Scannick Road. What additional screening measures can and should be taken beyond the bare minimum requirements to ensure that the unsightly backside of the solar farm does not impact residential property values in the area? Additionally, the PowerPoint says that they will plant a row of arborvitae ten feet on center as part of the screening measures. A few issues and questions here. Number one, these would need to be five, four feet on center to provide an effective screen. Ten feet on center will mean that the solar panels will always be visible through the gaps in the trees. Will the plants be a minimum six to seven feet tall at the time of installation to ensure proper screening right away? Three, will the plantings be around the entire perimeter of the proposed facility? Number four, this is referenced in the PowerPoint, but I do not see them called for in the engineering plans that have been issued for permitting. What is going to ensure that the plantings will be a requirement that is issued along with the permitting approval? From Mark La Pointe, two fifty-three Scannick Road, East Windsor. Application twenty-four dash sixty-four P, solar farm is a terrible use of this land at a butt's route five. This will dramatically impact property values. And then from Joyce Anne DeShane at sixty-six Phantom Road in South Windsor, please vote no. We do not want a solar farm. We have so much noise from Aldi on Ry Street already. There are also health concerns. We do not need more. Do you want this located next to your home? And then from Rob Enrici, two sixteen Maskell Road, South Windsor, not in favor of destroying more farmland for a solar facility. Maybe put it on the roof of the Geysler's Plaza. That plaza is already a nice. That plaza is already a eyesore. Lots more room at Buckland Mall, too." And that's it.
Thank you. We also have, our deputy chair was unable to attend, but many of us, I think several of us went and visited sites, and he actually wrote a note. He spoke to me, he had a last-minute reason to cancel coming here, and so I asked him to send me a text of... We're getting it. He also took some pictures. Yeah. All right, so, he, uh, sent... He visited the two sites that Michelle Leip suggested to us, but also Windsorville Road near Plantation Road, and this is pictures that he took of, of that site. And then he took a picture of the site that was in East Windsor that people were worried about the noise. So I'll read you his note. "The first two photos are our solar equipment on Windsorville Road near Plantation Road. The noise from these units is very noticeable and would cause concern from me for residents nearby. The last row, the last photos from Middle Road and East Street, the noise on this cloudy day was an evident humming sound. I can only imagine what it would be like on a full sunlight day. I apologize for not being in attendance tonight." And again, that's from Kevin Foley, our vice chair.
I also have a few copies of the pictures that the chairman sent. I could bring those up.
I don't know, I think maybe I'll get around to these when we, when it's my turn to speak on the application, but, thank you. I guess now we'll hear from commissioners.
One of the questions I had was around the maintenance schedule of the site. I don't think we saw anything. Is it a monthly, quarterly, yearly review of the site? So, I don't know if you could clarify or send some documents.
I, I don't have that information with me today, but I can ask CTEC to provide that. Are you familiar with what was provided for the record?
Not everything.
Okay, because there was quite information provided. I mean, if you feel more should be provided, we can certainly look for it, but they did provide their inspection process and their, as mentioned, they did have a decommissioning plan, and they have a draft emergency response plan. It was all part of the record.
Do we, does our engineering department, and you think that it's adequate?
I mean, this was sent to the fire marshal, and he conferred with the fire chief. I mean, all the, these documents were available for the different departments to review. I think we did get the comment early on about the access to the site and improving the access to the site, which the applicant accommodated with a, accommodated with a new access road. And the feedback I got from the fire marshal was they were satisfied with the revised plans. If there's something further that you want me to have looked into, I'd be glad to, you know, we can either, at the applicant's request, we could keep the hearing open to review things further, or at your direction, I could review things and bring it to you at your work session, you know, as a follow-up. I can't introduce new information, but I can certainly review additional information if there's something that you wanted to put as an approval condition, for example. So there's different options of how, if you want more review or more additional information.
So, that, that schedule that they gave us, is there some way to enforce that in our, in our...
You, I mean, you have zoning regulations that require that the, the site be decommissioned, so it becomes a zoning enforcement issue if someone chooses not to do that. You can place it as an approval condition, and then it becomes even tighter if your regulations were to change over time. So certainly through special exceptions and putting approval conditions in place to accomplish what you want to do. Just for an example, I heard three feet was as deep as it was going to go. You could put that the decommission plan has to take all equipment out of the ground. I mean, those are things that you could, could look to do if that's what you wanted to do.
Okay. Commissioner Korashi, we interrupted you. Is that pretty much it? Okay. Commissioner Cover Nero.
Thank you. I believe all my questions have been answered at this time. Appreciate having the extra public hearing.
Most of mine have been answered, too. Michelle, I just wanted to understand something. You had mentioned that the, the East Windsor site that currently exists, the humming sound and everything that came out of there was significantly different than the Enfield site?
Absolutely.
And the Enfield site used different equipment than the East Windsor site?
That's correct.
And this new proposed site will use equipment that mirrors East Windsor's or Enfield's?
That I can't answer, maybe. Are you familiar with the, the panels that are being used? Are they similar to what was used on the Enfield site? Do you know?
Don't, I don't have that information now, but I can say something about the other site that you're referencing. The site that you're referencing is about six times bigger than the one that's being proposed. It has, like, thirty, I think it's thirty-six or thirty-four inverters. Our site is only going to have four. I believe the distance between that equipment and the abutters is a hundred feet. Our site is five hundred feet away from, from residences. So it's, it's not the same, you can't compare the two because they have different conditions.
Okay, I understand that part, but I think it'd be good to know, since there is such a difference in equipment and the sound produced by the equipment, if we could at least find out if they're going to mimic the Enfield equipment versus the East Windsor equipment.
Yeah, I, I can say that I spoke with Jen after the last public hearing, when I was telling him, that's the engineer that was at our last public hearing, and I was letting him know about this. And he did express to me that he was familiar with both sites, because he had worked in the solar industry before he got to Burns McDonald and had some knowledge or even involvement in these sites. And he did assure me that the, was aware of the East Windsor site problem, and that was not going to be the type of panels that they would be using on, or the inverters that they would be using on their site. What we, again, could do through your approval conditions is you can require performance, right? So you have a, for example, you have a sound study that demonstrate a certain performance. You can require that the equipment that's purchased meet that performance level, and that's what you've been demonstrated through the public hearing. We can't tell them to use a certain product that's just would not be proper, but we can certainly dictate performance of expectation.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Commissioner Dexter.
You know, the one thing that sticks out to me with all the twelve special exception criteria is the surrounding property values. And I know it's not a big, high-density area around that. I'm, I'm not even sure how many homes are affected, but I do know in our own town of South Windsor, I think it's still in effect, that any house that abutted the power lines received a reduction in their assessment, which is kind of a way of saying, we understand that this is going to be a potential issue in selling your home someday. And so, you know, I, I don't, I don't think there are maybe three or four of our exception criteria that, that really don't comply. Character of the neighborhood, welfare of the community, with what we don't know about solar farms. I mean, even the gentleman that got up and talked about consumer protection and all of the complaints, you know, is this just the beginning? I, I recognize this isn't a siding council application, thank goodness, because we have, we'd have, we'd be done, you know? And that scares me. So I'm just going to be very cautious and just listen to all the, all the inputs.
Commissioner Willard.
So I'm going to preface my comments and questions by playing an audio clip from Okay? The last time that this was presented, I raised an objection to the way that the sound measurements were done and presented to us, because on the last document, the sound measurements ended at eight kilohertz. That sound right there is about twelve to fifteen, while I was, twelve to fifteen kilohertz. While I was sitting up here, I went online, looked at, I researched the exact inverter that you're planning on using here, and there were news articles about people complaining about a no, a noise at fifteen kilohertz. I specifically asked for you to come back and present to us findings, and a measurement of those devices passed eight kilohertz up to twenty kilohertz. Instead, you come back with an addendum, which is a restatement of the Connecticut state limits, the octave limits, which ends at ten kilohertz, ten thousand hertz, okay? That sound is well above ten kilohertz. So what the state of Connecticut is asking for measurement doesn't solve the problem with the inverter that you're proposing to use here. So two things I'm asking for. Number one is a complete sound study measured beginning at thirty kilohertz all the way up to twenty kilohertz, given to us in a table at thirty kilohertz intervals. That's number one. Number two, I would like the address of a site in the state of Connecticut or Western Mass. that is using these exact model of inverters, so that we can go visit that to figure out whether there is a problem with these inverters. And I would request that before we take any action on this. No further questions.
Commissioner Boganski.
I agree with everything you just said. The idea of, like, the noise, the noise concerns me for residents in the area. I feel for the person whose property is proposing this, obviously, but I do think about everybody else who lives in the area. The other thing I'm not sure I totally, I feel really confident about is obviously the property values and how it's going to affect the residents who live in that area, as well as any health concerns and fire risk. So I still, I think that those are still outstanding for me.
Thank you. Let me just ask, Commissioner Willard, the, the sound you played very close to the microphone, how would you describe what we heard here versus how loud it was? You know, I don't know if you can quantify that, but was it that loud, or, or, you know, because of the way we reproduced it?
I, I have hearing loss, and I can still hear it.
But it was more faint? And, and, yeah, okay.
It's loud.
Was it a cloudy day or sunny?
It was sunny.
And where were you when you, were you near the equipment or near the road?
On the road. You can't get to the equipment because it's in the site, so you're, I don't know, seventy-five feet, a hundred feet away?
Again, I think I want to just also reiterate that our equipment's going to be five hundred feet away from, from anything, basically, so sound is going to be a lot less than what you experienced.
I also visited the two sites that are, Mrs. Leip suggested, or one was the site in East Windsor. I went up close to the equipment, you can actually see the equipment through the, through the slats on the fence, and I recorded the noise. Now, this is twenty feet away, okay? So, if I can get this to play. But that gives you an idea of the... Oops, just a second. Okay, let's try that again. So that's the sound that, that the equipment makes at the source, so it's obviously not five hundred feet away. When I went out to the road, I could still hear it, more of the high-frequency sound was getting through to the road. I guess I would ask if, you know, while we're on, anybody else went out, and what was your experience if you went out?
I'm also asking, in both of these situations, was there a buffer in between, like the trees?
Yes, there was a, there was a fence, well, in the East Windsor site, there was a fence, something, somebody obviously erected a, a taller fence, but it didn't completely eliminate the noise. Now, that day was partly cloudy, a little bit hazy, so the sun was probably not full strength. And plus, what I've read is that the noise is actually louder in the summer than it would be in the winter. So it's very difficult to have an accurate assessment, it's just that, in our experience going there, we do actually hear it, we don't know how loud it is, and when someone's trying to have a barbecue across the street, that's very hard for us to assess, but it is real. That, that's definitely our experience. Anybody else here went to the site? Did you get, get to hear it?
Jeremy, could you just clarify, did, is it, was the, what you played was the East Windsor site or the Enfield site?
That was East Windsor.
Okay.
When I went to the, the Enfield site, I couldn't hear anything. I not only stood next to the site on the road there, the address you gave us, but then it's actually probably a form, former Catholic cemetery, and I walked all around the cemetery trying to hear it from different directions. I couldn't hear it at all. I could hear airplanes, I could hear, you know, but I couldn't hear, I could not hear anything coming from that site. Now, what I don't know is whether they have a central inverter. It was hard to tell whether they got inverters on each row of panels, but it's obviously possible to make a solar farm that doesn't make noise, and, and at the perimeter. But the one in East Windsor is obviously, in my opinion, an example of how not to do it, how not to build a solar farm, both in the choice of equipment and the placement of the inverters. You solved the placement. We would have to put a condition on, I think, to govern the noise level of the actual source, of the equipment itself. I think it's hard to argue that this won't affect the property values of people who live across the street. I guess I'm kind of new to hearing about the fire risk from solar. Can you comment on, you know, what, what's the industry actually experiencing with fires starting with the equipment? I mean, fires can start in, in the grass, I guess, just from somebody throwing a cigarette or something, but, or lightning.
So this particular panel, it's crystalline, from what I know about it, is, it's, the risk is low. And as, as far as fires starting, a lot of that has to deal with the equipment that is being, you know, like, the, the switches, the, the, the cable boxes that are put in place and, and the way they're, they're installed. As far as a transformer, trans, that, the transformer with vegetable, vegetable oil actually can handle higher temperatures than normal, or not normal, but mineral oil transformers can. So it is the better solution for that. So it, it can, it can act at, it can work better at higher temperatures. So this equipment's also monitored remotely, and when there's a, when there's a, an incident, the equipment shut off. So that also reduces the, the, the risk. But from what I gather from my research of solar facilities, that, that isn't a common occurrence, it's, it's, it's low.
I think we talked about the testing program, the maintenance program, and you get, we have some input on that, so just make sure we enforce that with a condition. I like the idea of a decommissioning bond, but I would think that if we put a bond on now, and inflation however much happens over twenty years, it's very hard to predict how much of a bond to put on to ensure that the decommissioning occurs and whether that bond would need to have interests associated with it, or, you know, how do we? Do we have any bonds anywhere else in our system that have a twenty, forty-five year lifetime?
You know, Redland Brick, when we had a restoration bond with Redland Brick, that was kind of a long-term, long-range bond, and they posted a license bond or surety bond, something like that. Makes me wonder if you could have some kind of renewal, if you will, after ten years to come in or whatever to revisit the decommissioning program or something like that. I'm just thinking out loud. Get some thought to it. I mean, I agree, any cost now that you establish, who knows, right? Chair, if I could just respond to one of the public comment, just to clarify for the record. The executive session that the town council held was not on purchasing the property. It was on purchasing some development rights on a portion of the property that did not involve the solar area at all. Just to be clear for the record.
Thanks for that clarification. I think we can certainly put a condition in for the full removal of all the equipment. The hundred-foot limit that we have that kind of wrenches over into East Windsor versus putting it all in South Windsor, how enforceable is that?
Again, as an approval condition, it's enforceable. It's like any other zoning regulation at that point. It would become a zoning violation if anything were to encroach in that area.
Even if it happens across the property line?
You know, the approval's based on the solar farm, so yes, it would still be enforceable. And I think in the planner's letter, she was looking for a solution like that. And in my discussions with her, I think she understood that that's how we would propose to handle it. It's not a building lot at this time. I think it was represented, it wasn't being proposed to become a building lot, and they understood the hundred-foot restriction.
Okay. I thought the comments on the screening with Arbividey were interesting. I was driving down Route Five past the auction site, and they have... The Arbividey has reached a point now where you literally can't see through it. You cannot see those cars. Now, the question would be of the height and the spacing.
So the plan chose six feet on center? I think the letter referred ten feet on center, but the plan does indicate they will be planted six feet on center. Just as a clarification.
And do we think that's adequate? We do? Okay. So I have a technical question. The DC watts of this thing are what, one point three megawatts, something like that DC?
Yes.
And then the AC that comes out is just under a megawatt? So what happens to the three hundred kilowatts of energy that's being produced that's not turning into AC?
I'm not an electric engineer, but I can just guess that it's probably lost in the transformation.
I mean, it's either turning into electricity or turning into heat. That's the physics, okay? So where is the heat coming out?
Probably the transformer and the inverters. But those...
Three hundred kilowatts is a lot of heat.
Yeah, again, I can't answer that directly because that's not my expertise, but I can definitely get you that answer.
I guess the other side of this is the number of these questions really apply to any solar farm or any solar, large solar installation. And so that, my recent question, the questions about fire, I mean, it seems like there's hundreds and hundreds of successful solar farms that, you know, they're contributing to our environment, contributing energy. So these kinds of questions, I think, it's hard to put it all on one solar farm as an issue. But I think those are all my questions. But do we have some open things that we haven't answered that we want to hear? You want to hear the noise report at all the frequencies of the human hearing?
I was just consulting with the applicant. If you want to hold the public hearing open, as you may or may not know, you have thirty-five days to close the public hearing. You know, we're two weeks into it. The twenty-fifth would meet the thirty-five days, but I hate to go that closely with a snowstorm or something like that. So I would request the applicant to grant us a two-week extension just in the event that the twenty-fifth didn't go forward. So it sounds like something they're willing to do, that that's what the plan would be, would be to extend it to the twenty-fifth.
Okay, so you're granting us that extension verbally at this point?
Yes.
Okay.
And if, maybe you want to just, again, clarify what kind of information you would like them to return with so that we're all clear?
Commissioner Willett?
Yeah, a full audio reading of the exact unit that is being proposed for this site, measured beginning at thirty hertz up to twenty kilohertz in thirty hertz intervals.
I'm sorry, what was the range again?
From thirty hertz to twenty kilohertz, measured in thirty hertz intervals, thirty, sixty, ninety, one, twenty, et cetera.
Would you want to do that on a logarithmic scale rather than, that's a lot of...
They're literally hitting a record. It processes it. It does spit out a table. I'm just asking for the full table.
Yeah, I was also disappointed by the supplement. The highest frequency I heard and saw in there was ten kilohertz.
That's actually not a measurement on that table. This is just a restatement of Connecticut deeps noise limits that they would allow. So at ten kilohertz, you can't have more than six decibels. All the noise that we're all hearing is somewhere in the twelve to fifteen kilohertz range.
So the first thing we want is a noise report. Anything else that we have?
The second one is a location. Just call it within sixty miles of South Windsor that has the exact model of inverter installed today.
That information we'd like to have so we have time to visit.
Is there something further that you want related to a decommissioning plan or related to a maintenance plan? Or do you want me just to revisit it with our fire personnel and just make sure that...
Yeah, I would say if it's not adequate in the paper you were looking at, then we should do that.
Okay, we'll take a look at it again with those folks.
And then is there any way to secure it with a bond of any sort?
Let me look into what our town attorney may advise related to that.
Anything else?
Is there any, would there be a way that we would be able to do some type of an assessment? Or is there something around property values and how it's impacted other communities with similar type?
That is not something we'll...
No, no, maybe from other experiences you all have had.
Actually, we did get one such report in Jennifer Kritcher's letter. Okay, I guess we have a motion to continue the public hearing. For somebody.
Make a motion to continue this public hearing until our next regularly scheduled commission meeting. That would be on February, or February twenty-fifth, twenty-fifth, right? February twenty-fifth?
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Free Town. Thanks.
Our next public hearing is a continuation of the sign, text amendment, PCC-sponsored zoning text amendment, section six-five signs. And we held it open just to make sure anyone in the community would have an opportunity to speak on this. Is there anyone who would like to speak about this? Hearing seeing none? Any other comments from commissioners?
I'll just note that I did print out that CROG report that we were, mentioned last time, but we didn't have a copy of. You two should both have it.
Okay, great. Is that in our pack?
Should be somewhere in there, but I think I have one.
Basically, they're saying they had no apparent conflict with regional plans and policies or concerns of neighboring towns. Okay, so... Would somebody like to make a motion?
To close the public hearing?
Yes.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right, back to... So... Now we're having the regular meeting. I had a number of comments on the minutes, and then I thought I'd put them in the solar folder because a lot of the comments were in the solar. I don't have my comments with me, so we'll carry the minutes over to the next meeting. Now we're open for public participation on any item that is not on the agenda. Anybody? Hearing seeing none? Move on to application twenty-seven dash zero P Fleet Assist. Twenty-five dash zero seven P.
I'm going to make a motion to approve application twenty-five dash twenty-seven, twenty-five dash zero seven P Fleet Assist LLC. We have a car dealership license to sell new and used automobiles limited to total four on site. We have our standard approval conditions. And we get down to number eight, which says any cars posted for sale shall be parked on site in designated parking spaces. And the last one is all parking needs must be met on site.
Second.
The second motion and second, any discussion? In the case, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Passes unanimously. Now we're on to, we're skipping the C-Tech solar one, on to the text amendment for signs.
I'll move to approve the PCC-sponsored zoning text amendment to section six point five on signs. Point one, the Planning and Zoning Commission finds that the zone text is in conformance of the Town Plan of Conservation and Development. Point two, the effective date of the zone text amendment is March second, twenty twenty-five.
Second. Any further discussion? Take a vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I think I'd like to thank the members who participated in working on this change. Commissioner Willett and Commissioner Bernstein joined me on that. And thanks a lot for the effort of our two town planners. There's a lot of little details in this thing that took a lot of work, so very much appreciate it. Okay. Do we have any bonds?
No bonds.
And do we have any old business? Other than a reminder, there's a training opportunity.
That's correct. People have been scheduling with Josh. Did you have any question?
No, just Commissioners Willett and Bernstein. I will be signing up probably this week for that webinar on March twenty-second, I believe. If anyone else would like to attend, the deadline, I think, is February twenty-sixth to sign up. Will you be attending?
I would like to, yes.
Okay. That is on the, Commissioner Viteri, did you? Okay. Are you?
Oh, yeah.
I'll send out the email again Thursday or Friday and make sure I have everyone.
Okay, I think we're looking for one more motion.
Moved to adjourn?
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.